I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Gracie Malotki and Rayanne Tofik.
My congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll stay right there, Councilman Hammonds will be right down to talk to you.
Outstanding job. Come on up here. We're gonna start with Grace. Grace, you can come right over here. Thanks for coming out tonight in this cold weather. Grace is nine years old. She's in 4th grade in Mrs. Patterson's class, and she loves to dance and is in a competition in tap and jazz. And your parents were telling me recently you just won, you won something. You wanna tell us what you won?
I won a platinum for my competition.
That's outstanding. That was in a Platinum Award? And what was it in? Tap?
It was in jazz.
Well, congratulations. Also says here that your favorite color is teal and you love sparkles. That's awesome. I'm gonna give you a certificate here. This certificate I'm about to give you is on behalf of the Westland City Council, the mayor, and the city clerk for coming out and doing the pledge tonight. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out. And Rayanne, how you doing tonight?
Good.
Alright, it says here you're eight years old and you're in 3rd grade in Mrs. Hines' class and you, Hennessy's class, I'm sorry. And he says you love to play soccer. Where do you play soccer?
Um, I, I'm not signed up for it, but I love to play in my backyard.
Outstanding. You have, um, your, your friends come over and play with you?
Uh, no.
Just like playing soccer, huh?
My brother.
Awesome. That's great. Says you love to smile. You do have a great smile here. Thanks for coming out and doing the pledge tonight, and I'm gonna give you your certificate on behalf of the Westland City Council, the mayor, and the city clerk. Here's your pledge, certificate. If we could have your, uh, parents, both your parents and Mr. Watson, the principal, come on up, please. Mr. Watson, would you like to say a few words?
We're just honored to be here in Westland and have these two amazing students represent, representing Wildwood. It's just fantastic to have them come out. So thank you for letting them be included in such an important part of our process.
Great job, Wildwood Wolves. Good job. Would you like to say anything about your son? The two of you, would you like to say anything? You're okay? Alright, we're just gonna get a quick picture if we want everyone squeezed in here.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
President.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hammonds.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Godbout.
Present.
Of course, Mr. President.
We'll begin with announcements and presentations. Mary?
Good evening, Councilman Godbout, the entire council, to the mayor, to the clerk, and to everyone in attendance here today. It's always a pleasure to be in the fine city of Westland. I just want to remind you that Commissioner Anderson is working very, very hard in the district. And just as a reminder to you, he's a part of the Committee of the Whole. He's a vice chair for the Economic Development Committee. He's a member of the Health and Human Services Committee. He's a chair of the Special Committee on Criminal Justice Complex. And, um, he also is a member of the Ways and Means. And so, as you can see, he's very, very busy. If there's something that you need from him, he's more than happy to help you with it. Also, I want to remind you of the coffee hours. It's the second Monday of every month, beginning at 9 o'clock at the big boys. And also, with the weather being as, as it is currently, you can access compass.waynecounty.com to see where the snow plows are. You can get real time and you can know before you go. So you don't have to just end up in bottlenecks or go down roads that are not plowed. You can know before you go. And that's all that I have for you. And if I could be of any further service to you before I leave, do not hesitate to let me know. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Dan?
Uh, Dan Statchow, Westland, Westland Veterans Memorial Day Parade with Wayne. Reason I'm up here this evening is we had a very good veterans summit, found out what our issues were with various veterans, what they wanna do throughout the course of the year. Just wanted to let everybody know that we're looking at possibly inching the parade route. The police chief, myself, and another individual are going to be getting together this week and discussing issues, and we'll bring it back to the council. Let them know exactly what we have planned. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone in the audience? We'll close citizens' questions or input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I sent an email. Um, there was, I sent a question to the mayor and the city attorney, and the entire council was copied on February the 11th, and I had not received a response. And section number eight of the policy and procedure states that if a council member's request for information shall be submitted to the mayor and appropriate director, this request shall be made electronically and copied to the entire council. If a response is not received within two weeks period, the council member may place the request on the council report list at the public meeting. So I am requesting that my question be moved to under new business item 2A.
I'm gonna let the clerk respond to your request.
Just give me just one moment. Okay, so it is Article 5, Section 8. And I can tell you that past practice has been, and to the extent that I know, the language has not changed, past practice has been that a request for information to, I'll just say administrative staff, the mayor and/or administrative entities, if not responded within the prescribed period, that particular item becomes placed at the end of every successive agenda for the city council until it's responded. It's not an agenda item, but it gets placed on the agenda as a formal reminder.
Okay, so it is, your, can you just update me since this is the first time that I've happened, have had to do this? When it's placed on the agenda, do you read it aloud? And is there a answer? Or what is the process?
No.
Because it states that it is placed on the, the list, and all other items will actually be announced on the.
So, uh, this has been utilized in the past, so that you know that. It has been an item that's been placed on the agenda. It is not an item that's read at the meeting. It's not an item that is being considered for action. It is simply a notation word in a less formal sense, a reminder that that item has not been responded to the member of city council. So it's not, again, it's just not an item for any sort of action.
Okay, so what, I, I believe the way that I read this was this was giving some sort of action for council who had not received a response. So if you're stating that it's just going to be, um, fantomally placed on the agenda, it's not gonna be read aloud, and there's no answer tonight, I will bring light to it in my statement because I, this, it's been actually almost three weeks, and I have not received a response yet. And the way that the, the policy is written is, and I appreciate what you're stating, because this is the first time this has happened since I've been on council, the policy does not state what you're stating. So, um, I appreciate you explaining that, but it is of no, uh, it, it is of no resolve to simply for us to know what it is, and there's no answer, and the public does not know. So if it's not going to be read as an agenda item, I will bring light to it during my statement.
And, you know, during council comments, you're, you're, to the extent I know, you're free to make any comment you would wish. But to be clear, it does say, state in the, in the rules and procedures, it refers to it as a council report list, not that it's an agenda item. And the public could be aware of it if they chose to view the agenda. It is a physical notation at the end of each agenda until it becomes responded.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Getting back to the consent calendar, is there any further, is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of bid for golf course maintenance services. Administration recommended the low bidder links at Gateway LLC in the annual amount of $139,000 for a three-year period and shall not exceed a total amount of $417,000. Approval of agreement with Three Cities Art Club to select local artists whose work will be displayed in the gallery at city hall. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Approval of contract with YMCA for a summer day camp. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Adoption of manpower amendment 2019-002, add planning director. This item was introduced February 19, 2019. Introduction of ordinance 188A4, an ordinance to amend Chapter 50, Article 4, Divisions 1, Sections 50 through 102 through 50 through 102A of the Westland City Code to provide for the manner in which consumer fireworks may be used and displayed. Last item approved on the consent calendar, introduction of ordinance 177A to amend Section 110-2.1 of the Westland City Code to establish a temporary moratorium on applications for permits or licenses to establish new massage parlors. Moving to new business, item one. Establish a public hearing date for proposed 2019-2020 budget. The suggested public hearing date is May 6, 2019.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item two. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held February 19, 2019.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hammonds. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammonds.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item three. Approval of minutes of study session held February 25, 2019.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammonds.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item four. Approval of voucher.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson. Is there support?
Yes.
Support by Councilman Hammonds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Right?
Hi there, everyone. I invited a friend of mine, Richard, up here. He's gonna read off the nice certificate that I received from the Youth Group Assistance Program. And sometimes it's, it's nice when someone else reads it off for you. So it makes me feel great. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ray. It's an honor to read, uh, was, that Ray Schuholtz received, I believe it was last week, and a certificate of recognition. The Wayne County Commission proudly recognized Ray Schuholtz for the Spirit of Giving Award, whereas he has been an invaluable asset to the U, Westland Youth Assistance Program. He has appeared, appeared as a guest speaker who focuses on kindness, compassion, and acceptance of others. He has always made himself available for program youth and families. Therefore, be it resolved on the 7th day of February 2019 that the Wayne County Commission solutes and commends Ray Schuholtz. May he continue to inspire excellence, dedication, and compassion in others. Signed by Mr. Glenn Anderson, Wayne County Commissioner, District 12.
Thank you, Richard.
Yep.
So anyway, I, thanks a lot, Richard. What that, that means, it really meant a lot to me. I was really surprised when I went there and had five certificates, one from the courts, city council, thank you, the mayor's, thank you. And it really touched me, even put tears in my eyes. But you know, the first of all, too, is watching these kids, too, getting their, their, uh, their certificate, I mean, their awards, too, and talk about their success stories in the videos. Now, let's walk about that history and walk up that life. You know what? I never, ever, don't ever wanna see something like that again, because the system here in Michigan, that's why I travel, because people doesn't need to be institutionalized. Because you know what? Until you're in someone's shoes, you, but you understand what, what it's like. And, you know, and mental health, and I don't forget about them either, because I'm on the board with the authority right now with that Bacceter's Program. After a while, I'm gonna be going out to clubhouses, police departments, in the community, and fire departments, reaching out to them, how really important how mental health is. Because you know why? We don't wanna make it look like it's a stigma, and it's not. Sometimes people need help. Sometimes people don't know where to go. It's like what I say, someone comes in here to city hall and needs help. That way, you guys will have a book, you know, where to, uh, get help from people. Because like I said, you know, what you do on, the others will come back. And I think Westland Police Department is doing a great job with their passion and me working with them as advocate. And, and it really means a lot to me. This has really meant a lot to me, and I am taking this to the road. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Yes, Mr. Warren.
A good evening to the council and administration. Last Thursday evening, the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association had an election for leadership, and they decided to choose me as their president. And what I wanted to impart to the individuals here is that the doors are open to the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association, particularly in this election year. All those who wish to share their vision for the future of Westland, be they Democratic, Republican, or even Libertarian, are welcome to come to speak. Also, we're in a period of transition. Uh, and one of our main criterias was parks in that sense. So therefore, you know, any communications that you wish to move towards the Homeowners Association, just, uh, I will have to take that responsibility now, because I do not have any individuals on particular committees at this particular time to take on those responsibilities. But to the council, administration, police department, fire department, our doors are open for your guidance, because there's some issues, like you have the Stand By Your Pan campaign. And, um, so that this information and the vision of, of the individuals can be shared with those individuals in the Southeast District. Thank you.
One on my right? Yes, Mr. Graham?
Uh, Richard Graham from Westland, and also with Move Westland Forward. I missed the last few council meetings, but so have a few comments on some of the items that were discussed. First is the WCA assessing contract or extension. Was really amazed at that, the presentation of that, and the 4% year-over-year cost increases to the city, to the taxpayers, on a contract that hasn't, that's not gonna expire, I think, for well over a year. And really, within contrast of the firefighters that received only 1% increase. Uh, union firefighters versus contracted non-union. Really puzzling. Frankly, with that type of proposal, um, I would've thought the administration would've gone to him, to WCA, and, and actually asked for a cost reduction. If you're gonna extend a contract, and it's with over a year left, tell them 2% less, 2% less, and then maybe 2%, 2%. Or we're gonna put it out to bid. Be aggressive. I mean, I assume he wants the job. I assume his employees want the job. So really astounded by that type of, by that type of negotiation tactic. Regarding the recycling program, you know, no question about it, you know, 10 years ago, it was, it was a very good program, well done. However, when you don't, when you do very little over the next 10 years, those things go away. It's about what you do for me today. It's not what you did for me 10 years ago when you were younger, when you were more aggressive, and you cared more about this, about the mayor's job. We now have a mayor that continually runs for other offices, back in 2014 and 2018. And part of the problem is, is even council president Godbout. He came before council back in 2018 and warned about what was happening. You could see reports back from 2015 of the commodities market shifting downward, that China in general not taking those materials. Uh, when you, when you leave from behind, these things happen, and then you have an emergency on your hand. And the best solution is go burn recycling. Not a really good solution. Lastly, um, it was encouraging, last council meeting, when Mr. Smith, a resident, came up and talked about the things that I've been witnessing here for quite a few years now, were certain members of council, and even past members of council that were voted out. Uh, you know, you know, I'll call it bully, intimidate, roll their eyes, make facial gestures, make comments that are frankly rude and not very professional. Uh, I appreciate Councilwoman Green standing up for that also. It's, it's really not what we should be in this room, but especially from elected position, when you actually work for us, you're paid by the citizens. So, you know, hopefully we can improve on that, but it's been going on by certain council members for many, many years now. Thank you.
One on my left? One on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, city council. Good evening, everybody. Council, just a couple of quick things on the agenda. I'd like to thank you for moving forward on some new contracts for some successful partnerships with the city. The first one was a re-up with the Three Cities Arts Club. They've been very successful with their art gallery here at Westland City Hall, and we look forward to continuing our work with them. Also, council, we re-upped the contract with the YMCA for the use of Tatton Park for a summer day camp. And this is a program that continues to get better and better every year. And I think that what we're gonna find probably after this year is I think that they're gonna actually outgrow the Tatton Park area, so we're gonna have to find a little bit more space for them. So I think that that's a, a good problem they have, and shows that these are both successful partnerships that continue to flourish. Council, I appreciate you moving forward tonight with the introduction to, um, to establish a temporary moratorium on applications for permits or licenses to establish new massage parlors here in Westland. We've had quite a few of these operations come to Westland in the last couple of years. They do require certain licensing and certification. So because of the amount of those that we're starting to get in, and the fact that currently these establishments are eligible to come to the city in any one of our zoning districts. So we're gonna take a 12-month moratorium on these. This will have to be officially adopted at the next council meeting, and we'll work internally. Some other cities, I think, have taken a pretty creative approach to this, so we'll, we'll take a look at that, and then certainly amend their own ordinances moving forward. So I appreciate your support on that. Couple other things. We hosted a veterans summit here at Westland City Hall this week. It was not open to the public, so I apologize if there were some folks that heard about it that, that wanted to attend. It was basically bringing all the, the local post in under one roof, get everybody together to talk about how we as a community can work with our veterans to make sure that we're honoring our veterans here in the all-American city to the best of our ability. A lot of the members of the post are, are getting older and aged, and they're having a harder and harder time getting folks out for ceremonies and parades, so we were able to get everybody under one roof, have a very candid conversation, and agree that we're all gonna work together to make sure that we honor the veterans in Westland the best we can. We're actually going to open that up to veterans from the city of Wayne as well. I announced I'm going to put together a committee, a veterans committee, that will be seated with members from both Westland and Wayne, all of our different veterans organizations, or organizations that assist veterans, will have a chance to have a delegate to this committee. And they'll meet quarterly to, to make, in an advisory role, to make recommendations to the administration on how we can work together to collaborate, to pool our resources, and make sure that we're doing special things for our veterans. So it's something that we look forward to developing out over the next few months. And a good thing that came out of this summit was it looks like we were able to resurrect the Memorial Day Parade. So, Dan, thank you for your involvement with that, and I appreciate you and Heather both being there to talk about it. Um, we made an announcement here last week. It was a, a new partnership, creating a healthy city with Garden City Hospital. On February 27th, we announced a new partnership under our passport for, it's called Passport to Good Health. This is actually part of the city of Westland's Passport to, um, a Healthy City Campaign. And every year, we try to partner with a different organization to kind of take that to the next level. So you can learn more about the Passport to Good Health on the city of Westland's homepage. There's a button you can click on, and you can. a button you can click on, and you can also view that through Garden City Hospital's website as well. You can follow us on Facebook. There's a lot of fun and easily achievable challenges to kind of get you through the summer, to encourage health and wellness in all areas, from fitness challenges, heart-healthy eating, mindfulness, and giving back to others. And you'll see the folks from Garden City Hospital at several of our events this summer to push the Passport to Good Health. It's a free program, and there are prizes, so I encourage you to take a look at it. The last thing I have is just to invite everybody to come out to our annual Detroit Red Wings Alumni Charity Hockey Game, which is on March 15th, so it's right around the corner. We did receive word from the Red Wings alumni that Detroit comedian Dave Coulier is going to be part of that game this year. For those of you that remember Full House, he was Uncle Joey, and my daughters now have watched Full House on Netflix and knew Fuller House, so they were really excited, but they wished the other uncle was there instead, so. But we got Uncle Joey, so. But Dave Coulier's a big hockey fan, so he moved, he just recently moved back to the Detroit area, and he's going to play in our game, so we appreciate that. There's another, besides the Red Wings that attend every year, and we'll have that list as we get a little bit closer, there's also going to be another special guest. His name is Bobby Hull Jr. So it's not Bobby Hull, he's about 75 years old, but his son was a pretty good hockey player, too, and he actually went out and created a, I think it was a roller hockey league, and he actually was very good at that. So Bobby Hull Jr. is going to be making a guest appearance with the Detroit Red Wings that night as well. And certainly that night, we're going to take a moment at the beginning for a moment of silence to recognize the passing of Ted Lindsey, former Red Wing great, and Ted Lindsey has been part of our Red Wing Alumni Game before, too. So tickets are still on sale. We have them here in City Hall. We have them at the front desk when you come in. We have them in the mayor's office. Joe's got them over at the ICE Arena, and you can buy your tickets at the door. It's going to be a fun night. Doors open at 6:00. The game's at 7:30. Hope to see you there.
From the city attorney's office.
Just a couple of quick things. We introduced the city fireworks ordinance changes tonight, and I know in your packet there's an explanatory memo, but I just thought I'd mention for the public that if it's adopted at the next meeting, this will cut the number of days out of the year for which fireworks could be used from 30 down to 12. This is consistent with changes in state law. It will also adjust the time in which fireworks can be set off. Currently, it's 8:00 AM to midnight. It'll change to 11:00 AM to 11:45, again, consistent with state law, and some other changes reflected in it, but I think the number of days was worth noting for the public. With regards to the veteran summit last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend, in part because I wanted to hear what Eric Dieters, who's the VA Ann Arbor Health System Chief Strategist, agreed to come and speak to the group, which I think was quite a coup for Westland to have him present and hear about a community-based outreach clinic that's being planned for the western Wayne County area. It'll be a, largely a primary care facility, so our Westland veteran residents will have easy access to this facility, and I think that's great news for folks in western Wayne County and here in Westland. He wouldn't divulge the location. He claimed that they're still in contract negotiations. There's only three people who know where it might be cited, but they're expecting groundbreaking in the spring. In a year from now, there'll be a brand-new primary care place for veterans in the area. So I think that's great news. Thank you.
Thanks. Begin council comments. Councilwoman Green?
I'd like to start by thanking the young people who came to lead the pledge for us tonight. They did a great job. I'd also like to remind everyone that this month is Women's History Month. It's, March is famous for a lot of things, but among them is Women's History Month. And so we want to definitely congratulate all the women who have made an impact to our society. I was able to attend a meeting today at Randolph Technical School in Detroit, and it was a large class of young women who were being trained in plumbing and electricity. They were doing welding, painting, and the Mechanical Contractors Association was present as well. And so one of the things that they're promoting for young women is not only to get into skilled trades, because as we know, a four-year university or an extensive college education is not for everyone. So, and there's also a shortage in skilled trades. So being able to not only participate with that meeting, as the owner of a construction company myself, but to listen to some of the stories that they have and see them going further in their education was really enlightening. But the Mechanical Contractors Association of Michigan has a program for men and women, or young men and young women, that they can go directly through that trade program for free. And by the end of the program, they'll not only have an associate's degree, but they'll be a licensed contractor in a variety of construction trades. So if anyone is interested in learning a bit more about that, they can find more information at, excuse me, mcaDETroit.org, short for Mechanical Contractors Association, mcaDETroit.org. Also, wanted to let everyone know that I had the opportunity to attend a really nice meeting this weekend at the library. The Meet Your Muslim Neighbor event was at our public library Saturday from 12 to 3:00. It was a really nice event, well-attended. I got a chance to meet some of our neighbors from not only the Westland community, but also people from Canton and Garden City. So it was really nice. Learned a lot about Muslim contribution to American history. So that program is something that the organization, it's titled, actually, Know Your Muslim Neighbor, kymn.org. They bring that meet-and-greet to a variety of cities. So it will be coming to a city near, near, near to Westland pretty soon. Once again, I believe they said they are planning to go back to Canton. So if you're able to attend, definitely do so. It was a very, a very good, good, good use of time. In terms of the agenda item that I asked to be moved to the agenda, I wanted to clarify for the public, because I was not aware that, the way that the policy is written, it does state that it'll be placed on the report list, which is the agenda list, and I was not aware that if I had not gotten a response, then basically it just means that I will leave with no response. And so in light of that, I wanted to clarify what it was that I wanted placed on the agenda. As many of you know, or some of you know, our policy and procedure requires us to, if we send an email to any city official, we have to copy the entire council. So in most instances, if any of us are copied on an email, because we are an elected official, the entire council has to be copied. And so on February the 11th, I sent an email to the mayor and the city attorney, and I copied the entire council in reference to what I feel is ongoing bias, retaliation, belittling, and bullying, to use just a few words, by our council president against me. This has been going on since I was sworn into council over a year ago. I have a very good documentation record in terms of what has been transpiring. Everybody on council is aware. Half of the mayor's administration is aware. The clerk's office is aware. The city attorney, everybody knows, nobody cares. And so if anybody knows me, I have a, I'm very good about standing up for not only the interest of residents, but being a woman working in mostly male-dominated fields most of my career. I'm pretty good at standing up for myself as well. But many other things that I have been subjected to since being on council, and he is not the only one, he is just the most consistent or continual one, the things that I have been subjected to are not fair. And I do believe that if the situation, if the men that I serve with, if they had to watch their wife, or their sister, or their daughter, or their girlfriend, or mother, or any woman that they love, have to continually stand up for themselves in an effort just to be treated fairly, not better, just equally, if they had to continually watch that, they would not be in agreement with what is going on either. But because it's happening to me, everybody's silent. Well, after a year plus, I'm at my wit's end, so I have sought, I have talked to an attorney, and asked for, at this particular point, I have asked for just recommendation in terms of how to best address this situation, because it is ongoing. It is, the very last council meeting, multiple people got up, and that is nothing in terms of what I have been subjected to. And I'm not going to be anyone's doormat. I'm not going to allow anybody to come up with Tasha rules that are not even documented by policy, and watch him treat the men differently than I am being treated, and watch them be afforded privileges and opportunities that I ask for first, and to be denied on multiple occasions to attend city of Westland business meetings by people within this administration. I'm not going to continue to have it. I'm not asked to be, I'm not asking to be treated fairly, or better, but you will treat me fairly, whether voluntarily or involuntarily. And so what I ask to be, apply to the agenda tonight, and I guess I'll just wait until the attorney responds to me, because I sent another email today asking for an investigation to be done by the city of Westland, because we are technically employees. We get W-2s. You cannot create a hostile work environment and harass people, and it go unaddressed. And you can turn on the news, or go to any internet, and see the outcome of businesses who allow that to go unaddressed. And so at this point, I am asking for an investigation to be done, and I, my email stated, "To the city attorney on February 11th," which this tells you, this is March 4th. I haven't gotten a response yet, so this tells you how much of a priority this is. I stated in the email to our attorney files on, "Please clarify the role you, as the city attorney, if any, excuse me, please clarify the role you play as the city attorney, if any, as it relates to preventing or addressing biased activity against a member of city council by another member of city council, or members of the mayor's administration. I'd like to understand if your role as city attorney allows you to act as a mute party, or if there is an obligation for you to act in any regard." This is something that, and this is not the first email. We can go all the way back through 2018 with instances like this. This could have been easily resolved, or just, just slightly addressed, but nobody up here has done anything, other than get irritated with me asking to be treated in the same manner that the men I serve with are treated in, and I'm not going for it anymore. So that is what I will be waiting on a response for. And residents, rest assured, I will not be broken. I will not be moved, and they mess around, and I'll be on city council for 18 years like President Godbout. I'm not going anywhere, and I'm going to continue to stand up for myself and the residents of this city. And finally, I'll end by congratulating you, Ray, on your award. Job well done. You're welcome.
Councilman Hammond. Councilman Hart?
Okay. Dan, thanks again, and also to the mayor. I'd like to thank you for putting together the veteran summit. I thought it was really good. It was nice to get all the veterans groups under one roof. It's funny, sometimes we, the veterans even themselves, sometimes form their little cliques, and it's hard to get them all back under the table again. And I think they're there, that it gave them the opportunity to communicate and work together on seeing what other, everybody else's functions are, and also getting the parade back going. So Dan, I thank you for that. And Mr. Fosona, again, thank the general on my behalf. It was always a pleasure to have her there. Ray, congratulations on your award. I know it's always nice to be recognized for all the hard work you do. You know, you do liaise very well. You're an advocate, and it shows, and you come out here and you tell us everything that's going on, and it's nice to get an award and recognition for it, and it's well deserved. Couple other things. I do agree with Councilwoman Green regarding skilled trades. There is a deficit for skilled trades. These young kids today, or not too long ago, I mean, they all just definitely took the college route, and college isn't for everybody, and it shouldn't be for everybody. There's a lot of opportunities out there, and there's a lot of good income to be made, and there's definitely a future. As our infrastructure here in this country continues to age, we're going to need able-bodied, capable people who can welders, pipe fitters, plumbers, HVAC. And there's a lot of opportunities outside, but there's also, I want to remind everybody about William D. Ford Technical Career Institute that's right here in the city, works with our school department, and my niece herself is also in the, she's in the culinary program at that school, and she loves it. So it's fantastic. So definitely look at that. The last thing I've got is, if you can believe it or not, and I had to check the calendar, and I don't know if it's true, it is on April Fool's Day, but it says compost starts back up four weeks from today. I don't know if you can believe that, but I was letting everybody know. The weather outside doesn't tell me that it's coming back anytime soon, but according to the schedule, composting does start four weeks from today, April 1st. That's April Fool's Day. I hope it's not a trick bear. So everybody, that's when it starts back. Enjoy your day. Stay warm. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Londo?
Thanks, President Godbout. I want to start off tonight by thanking President Godbout, and also the city attorney's office for bringing the fireworks ordinance to the city of Westland. It's one of the most popular calls we get during the summer, I think. Everyone's kind of nodding their head up here. So what that did, as the attorney mentioned, it cuts it down from 30 days to 12. So you can still enjoy your fireworks around the holiday, just not as many days to use them. I also had a chance to attend the, and participate in the annual youth recognition dinner last week. I'd like to personally congratulate all the award recipients. Ray was here tonight. There were also four or five youth that were awarded. I want to thank our incredible staff from the Youth Assistance Program, and all the parents that help out, and all the mentors. They all do a wonderful job. That's a program I'm very compassionate about. I serve on the advisory board, and you know, it's no, no, I had my share of troubles as a kid, but I turned my life around, and I want to give back and help out the youth in our community now. I also attended the veteran summit here at City Hall. I won't go into too much detail. The mayor had a lot to say about it, and Councilman Hart as well. It was just great to get a lot of the veteran groups in the room to discuss issues of importance to them, and try to work together to collaborate in the future. Happy birthday to Arthur Warren, and congratulations on your appointment to the president of the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association. Look forward to, if I can ever be of any assistance, please reach out to me. Also want to thank the mayor and his team for getting the information out to the residents about the curbside recycling program. Everyone should have received a letter and a frequently asked questions letter, and also there's a PSA on WLND. Do want to mention that the recycling center is still open in Westland, so you can still take your recyclable materials there. And I look forward to working together with the council and the administration to better our curbside recycling program in the future. That's it.
Councilman Hursberg?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Ray Schuholtz on your award. As Councilman Hart said, it was very well deserved. You put in a lot of effort and time, and trying to educate people on a lot of things, so congratulations. That's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Like to start this evening by thanking Gracie and Ray Yan, the two students from Wildwood Elementary, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. I'd like to thank the city attorney's office for getting, moving quickly on the fireworks ordinance. I asked at the February 6 meeting to have that, and we did the introduction today, and I look forward to its adoption at the next meeting. It's, as Councilman Londo indicated, we probably get more phone calls about fireworks offenses over the course of the year than any other single topic. So hopefully that'll limit that, the number of calls we get on that down, and it also reduces the hours as well. So look forward to that adoption. And Ray, congratulations. I, too, was at the Youth Assistance Program Recognition Dinner, and it was a great event. We had a pretty full room of students in there, and you know, hearing some of the stories from those, about those kids, and the way they've turned their lives around is very inspiring. I just want to also congratulate the, our Tactical Response Unit. Saturday, Saturday, yeah. They had the, their annual cigar fest at Hellenic Cultural Center. Again, it was a huge crowd at the event. It's always well-attended, and these guys do it as a fundraiser, so that they can afford to buy the toys, I'll classify them as toys, but things that aren't really in the city budget. And they've been doing this for a number of years, so that they can get night vision goggles and infrared equipment that they, you know, that they use as part of their, their, keeping the citizens of Westland safe and protected. So again, it was a great event. They did an outstanding job in getting it organized, and it was very well-attended. And is there a motion to adjourn?